Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of August 20th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor O'Clare?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Manor?
Counselor Manor is excused.
Counselor Morales?
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
We do have a quorum. Agenda item three, considering except the town council meeting minutes of Monday, August 13th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Corrections, additions, deletions. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have a couple of things that caught my attention, and the first of which, I'd like to ask a question of the Chair in regards to the way that motions and votes are recorded when it comes to yea, nay, and abstention. Is it typical and conventional that we would go yea, nay, abstention, or yea, abstention, nay? How would you like to proceed? Because there were a couple of things that caught my attention in these minutes.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Nash, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. It is prior to the meeting, you did bring that to my attention, and we did discuss it with the Secretary. It was my belief that it should be recorded, yays, nays, and abstentions.
Agreed.
So, anything that we've recorded will have to be going through the record to accurately define that. So it should be yays, nays, and abstentions.
Okay. So, to that end, there were some adjustments that I would suggest on the votes for items number 15, 17.
Item number 18, actually, the vote would be six to two, not seven. And then I had a couple of quick notes that were spelling correction on agenda item number
26, class action, second line.
And then I'd also asked for consideration to move the Vice Chair's reconsideration matter
to after agenda item 36 in the paragraph that had followed, rather than at agenda item number nine. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the recommendation from Counselor Nash, and I tend to agree that a record is of our meeting should be chronological. It does make it a little confusing that the motion to reconsider is within that vote because it would assume that you took that up at that action item. So, it would be my belief to have that moved to right after agenda item 36. And that makes sense?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda, let's see, number nine should be five-three, not five-four. So I don't think we had nine members here.
That is correct. It should be five-three, yeah.
And then under my council form, where it says, the last sentence, they will also be donating $100 to the fire department. Food drive, it should be the boot drive. And that's all I have.
Okay. So that was boot drive?
It should be boot.
Boot. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Agenda item number 31, it says it's 710. It's actually, I actually abstained on that one.
That is correct. So you have that, Madam Secretary?
That should be 701.
Yep.
Okay. Any further corrections, additions, deletions? Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor, as amended. unanimous of all present. Thank you. Thank you for bringing those items to our attention for consistency. Okay, agenda item four, subcommittee reports to General Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet on August 14th, and several of the items are on this current agenda, so I will get to those when we get to that point. We never ended up discussing the bylaw changes, which are kind of in limbo because we just seem not to be ready to do it. However, for those who are interested, there is going to be a public forum on the zoning bylaw changes tomorrow night downstairs in the Veterans Room. Actually, I think it's at 4:30 if I remember correctly, but I have it immediately in front of me. And I do not have, I don't have another meeting scheduled at the moment. There was supposed to be one before this meeting, but unfortunately, it had to get canceled because it wasn't posted properly.
Thank you, Counselor Steves. Department of Public Works Counselor DePietro is not here this evening. Education and Human Services Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, no meetings since our August 13th Town Council meeting, but we have one scheduled. The agenda will be posted this Thursday evening, and the meeting will be held on Thursday, August 30th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Plan and Development Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, we did have a meeting on the 14th of August. Numbers, agenda item number nine, 10, and 15 are on tonight's agenda. We do not, at this point, have another meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Adams. Protection of Persons and Properties Counselor Manor. I do know she has minutes still pending. I do believe she has a meeting scheduled on August 28th, next week, and topics on that will be police department staffing and fire department staffing.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I got a note from the office today that that meeting's actually being moved to August 30th for PPP.
Thank you. August 30th, thank you. August 30th, thank you. Again, those two items will be taken up at that time. Chairman's announcements, just a couple of quick things. Counselor Steves already alluded to the fact that there is a zoning bylaw public hearing tomorrow, public information meeting, not a hearing. Public information meeting, it'll be from 4:30 to 6:00 PM here at the Town Hall in the Veterans Conference Room. At 4:30 PM will be a presentation of updates to the town's zoning bylaw map, and at 5:15, approximately, there'll be a Q and A. The third draft of the updated zoning bylaw and proposed updated zoning map, because some of the zones will be changed according to the map, those are available online at the Southbridge website under the Economic Development and Planning Pages, Zoning Bylaw Update Project. I urge anyone that has an interest in the zoning and the changes of zoning in town to take a look and participate in that. We do have several meetings coming up throughout September and October. We'll be doing the reading of those zoning bylaws, roughly, approximately 80 pages of reading. So that will be a tall task for us to put forward as we move forward. We look forward to any input. Just a reminder, school starts next week, August 27th. I'm wishing the Southbridge school system a very successful opening. I did have the opportunity to meet with the receiver, Dr. Villar, last week. He did communicate the status of some updates on the staffing and his goal to provide the best education possible. I reiterated our stance that we are here to be partners and stewards in that quest to improve our school system. Also, we've been notified that Mr. Marchetti has resigned from the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority. I'd like to thank Mr. Marchetti for his service to the Town of Southbridge under that board, so they'll be looking to fill that position. And also, in the near future, we'll be communicating to the town, through the Town Manager's Office, some updates as to the trash situation, trash removal situation that's ongoing. So that will be forthcoming shortly. And that is all I have tonight. Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. A couple of things, some positive news. A number of counselors attended the meeting that we had at the library about Route 29, the bus that comes in back and forth from Worcester to Southbridge. The good news tonight is that bus will not be canceled. We've, under the WRTA, we worked together to find other cuts, and some additional state money came in, so we were able to save the route. I think that's really important for the citizens of Southbridge, so they have access to medical appointments and things in Worcester. So that was really, really great news. We are going to have to look in the future at where we can find savings, because the state seems to be funding less and less the support of the busing system. So we'll be looking at it, but for this year, we've been spared, and I think that was really, really good news. Second part of great, what I think is really great news, is the Central Street parking lot. The work is going to be starting very, very shortly. Our CDBG grant person will be sending notices to all the residents around Central Street Parking, but to make it clear, the work will begin on August 21st, and will begin with some trees that need to come down. So, building owners and people should be prepared to make parking arrangements. The contractor will put up signs to let you know where you can and where you can't park, but it is going to be a little bit of nuisance as we start rebuilding to make that parking lot a real asset to this community. So the good news is that it is moving forward. Half of it will be done this year, and the other half of that project will be done next year. So I think that's great. Couple of items that will be coming to Town Council shortly, just to give you a kind of a heads up. One is the basketball courts. As you know, we've been working to try to improve the basketball court at Henry Street Field. The bids closed today. We had one bidder who was an excellent company that's worked with our DPW in the past, and we'll be bringing a contract to one of the subcommittees very shortly to approve, to get that basketball project moving forward. We want to do that basketball court this fall, after the kids are back in school, and hopefully get it done, so we're ready for next year. They'll have a nice court to plan. So I think that's really, really great news. Another issue is, we've had some problems with the roof leaking in the library. I think many of you know, we've kind of contained it at this point, but we are going to have to do repairs to the roof. And we have state grant money, so there's no direct town funds going to go into it, but I'll be bringing forward a contract for your review as well to get that roof repaired. So we can, once we do that, then we can start working on the interior of that building. As many have seen, you've seen the paint peeling off, but we've waterproofed sort of the outside of the building, and now we're fixing the roof, and the next part will be doing the interior of that building. So we're making significant improvements to make the library as functional as possible and as nice as possible. So you'll see those things coming down the pike very, very shortly. I think that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manor.
Swear and end presentations. We have no presentations scheduled for this evening. Agenda item eight, Citizens Forum. Is there anyone wishing to address the Southbridge Town Council? If you can come forward to the podium. Anyone wishing to address the council? Okay, last call. All right, seeing none. Agenda item nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Paul King as a citizen member on the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. King is out here in the crowd right now. I just want to introduce him. First-time member who put his form in here a couple of weeks ago. Looking forward to hopefully working with him very soon. He's an assessor, he's worked, he actually has certifications in high-value appraisal, FHA appraisals, working single and multifamily dwellings, condominiums, and land appraisals. And I think he brings a pretty unique perspective to the P and D, and I appreciate the fact that he's volunteering for such a subcommittee. So, I highly recommend him.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Staying?
(inaudible) Mr. Chairman, I would like for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Do you abstain from this one, or do you vote in the affirmative?
Affirmative.
Okay. One abstention, Counselor DePietro. Agenda item 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Nick Tortis as an alternate on the zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a lot of us know Nick Tortis, a longtime building inspector for the Town of Southbridge. It's really nice that Nick is going to come back and lead, you know, lend us his expertise, and this time at no cost, which is really, really good. But it's great to have Nick back in. I think he's going to be a true asset to this particular board. I think his background is really, really solid, and I think that will benefit all the citizens as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel O'Clare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So I brought this up at the, at the subcommittee level, and I'll just, you know, briefly talk about my concerns here at the council level. Mr. Tortis served our town as building commissioner for 29 years. During that time, you know, in most dimensional requirements as far as zoning, he's made rulings, you know, one way or the other with specifically non-conforming pre-existing buildings in the Central Core District. I think that if somebody has made a prior decision, yea or nay, on a specific property or specific building, they're going to be unable to vote as a zoning Board of Appeals member, specifically because, you know, I believe that if you've made a determination in the past, one way or the other publicly, which, you know, building permits are public documents, that this is going to be an ineffective appointment, and I don't think that it's going to be in the best interest of the zoning Board of Appeals or Southbridge. So, I will be voting no, and I'm just letting you know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I'll go on record to say that I know the caliber of Mr. Nick Tortis, and I am absolutely certain that, working with the chairperson of the board, and also serving as an alternate and trusting his judgment, there should be no issue. So I adamantly support Mr. Tortis as the alternate member to the zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick observation regarding what Counsel O'Clare was just saying, is that it really, it's up to, I'm sorry, it's up to, it's up to Mr. Tortis to go through the ethics clarification on those issues that she raised, because if there are concerns, he does have to recuse himself. But I personally don't see there being any significant concerns on those things. There might be an individual thing here or there, but I think his experience would benefit the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries with one nay. Agenda item 11, vote to approve the transfer of $200,000 from landfill royalties account number 6790 to special article landfill legal fees number 9105 to pay for landfill-related legal costs. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is an issue that I frankly wish I didn't have to bring before you in the last couple of years. We brought it forward last year, and we're bringing it forward again this year. As you know, we're in two significant lawsuits as a result of the landfill issues, and this is funding, the attorneys, we've met with the attorneys and came out with a reasonable cost to deal with these two lawsuits. And this is an appropriate amount of money to set aside. We are talking about protecting millions of dollars of services provided to this town. So I think, while it sounds like a lot of money, what's at stake is a lot more money than what we're talking about, and I think this is a worthwhile investment. As you know, the money will be coming out of the landfill account money that we got in. It's sitting there, and it's been sitting there for these kind of purposes. I think we want to do everything we can to protect the town and make sure that we get all of the things that we're entitled to under the agreement that we have in place with Casella. And the town, and I know through this Town Council, is doing everything in its power to make sure that that agreement is upheld the way we believe it should be. So, I'm glad, and I want to thank the Town Council for their tremendous support on this particular issue, and we are going to move forward as, in the strongest way possible, to make sure that the Town of Southbridge's message is heard clearly to the judge in this case.
Thank you, Nick. Any further discussion? Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just to dovetail on what you were saying. I think all of us generally agree that this is something we don't really, we would rather not be doing if we could avoid it. I would much rather see this, this money be going to roads or pretty much anything else, because almost anything else is more useful than this. But, in the long-term, you're right. And, I mean, I will be supporting it, unfortunately. But I do, I think, I would be not much, I think the whole point of creating the royalty fund was to be able to do things for our community, and I would much rather, quite frankly, to see them go away.
Thank you, Counsel Steves. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous of all present. Item 12, vote to ratify the contract between the Town of Southbridge and Odyssey Advisors Incorporated in the amount of $7,750 for other post-employment benefits, OPAP, actuarial and consultant services for the 2018-2019 valuation cycle. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, that was, that was one of the items on the most recent GenGov meeting. So a quick summary is that this is going through, we need to do this as of July 1st of 2017 to update the OPAP benefits and all the stuff that's going on in there, and our account balances. And this is, Karen sent out for five quotes, got four of them. She looked, she and Mindy and a couple of other people looked at the two lowest and went through some of the details and decided that they actually wanted to, they're actually going, giving us the second one, not the first one, not the lowest, because of the quality of the services that they figured they could get from Odyssey as opposed to the first play, the first person. So, and she said, she said that she had called the IG's office at the state, and they said it was okay to do it primarily because it's under $10,000 and falls, you know, good business practices to do these kinds of things. So they went through the, they checked the references and stuff like that, and these people seem, from their point of view, seem to be better than the lower ones.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous of all present. Agenda item 13, vote to ratify the contract between the Town of Southbridge and Tyler Technologies for the contract amount of $590,508 plus $38,220 estimated travel expenses for the conversion of financial software to Munis. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had a great deal of discussion about this. This is to the purchase of a new financial system for the town and the school system that will tremendously benefit our town in terms of record-keeping and financial services. We've actually, in between the time of our subcommittee meeting, we got some more responses from our attorney about this particular contract. Being that it was a significant contract, I wanted our legal review of this, and they did so. With that, I'm very pleased, and Karen can get into the details if the board would like the details of it, but the company, after we got the legal review, was very positive and worked with us to make the changes. We're quite pleased that they would do so. So the modifications were all made, and I think we feel very strongly that this is a good contract for the town, and the lawyer has approved it. And if there's any other questions to the details, I'll let you get, you know, ask Karen those specific questions.
Okay. I know, before the meeting started, people had expressed questions, so Ms. Harneys? Thank you. Okay, who had the first questions? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I was reading through the, thank you for coming up, Karen. I was reading through the revised version of the contract, and a couple of them jumped out at me. One of the things that points out about the liability change, which is one and a half times what their total fees are, which is, seems to be roughly the $1 million they're insured for anyway. So that's, I don't have a problem with that issue. But I was curious about what if whatever problem happens with their system causes payroll or tax collection or other issues costing the town more than that?
(inaudible).
Is that, I mean, is that even potentially possible? That their, that a crash of their system could, could cause those kinds of issues for us?
I'm glad.
And a Mindy question?
If I could. We, we, our software is currently hosted outside of the building, so that could happen now. And what we do is, I actually save files from this week's payroll, just in case something happens, so we could send the same files, print the same checks with different numbers next week. So we keep safeguards in place here as well, and they can, they're actually, having them host it, they could run our payroll if we needed them to.
Okay. Okay. And the second question I had was, how does it actually benefit us to have their, have their contract governed by Texas law?
Say that again?
How does it, how does it benefit Southbridge for us to have their contract governed by Texas law and not Massachusetts law? I noticed that phrase in there, too, and that jumped out at me.
Well, I think the only option that they have is Texas. Otherwise, it would be Ontario, so it would be in Canada.
Oh, okay.
To see if there was a place in Massachusetts where we could have, I'm sorry, the United States where we could have it moved to. And they can do Texas. So that was still within our, you know, best interests to have it.
Why wouldn't it be in Maine if their office is in Maine?
I think, they must be, do you know anything more about it at all?
Just walked away.
I don't, I don't think.
I'm just, I'm just curious. If we're here, why, why can't we use Massachusetts courts? I'm hoping we don't have to do it at all, quite frankly, but just for curiosity's sake.
Mr. Town Manager? I'll attempt to answer it, and I'm not an expert in this area, but I'll attempt to answer it. Having worked in the software in terms of IT business for some time, it's often done by big software developers that have one location that, because they deal with a whole bunch of different states.
Right.
So they lock in one state, it's a convenience to them, that's generally where some of their headquarters. And I think, in this particular case, I think there's some of the headquarters in Texas as well as Maine. But for whatever reason, they had Ontario here, and when we talked to the town attorney, he asked if we could change it to the United States, and they gave us back Texas as an option. So, it wasn't like they gave us a whole bunch of options, but we wanted to at least get it back to the United States, where a lot of other towns and cities actually have to deal with Quebec. So I think this is an advantage, but doesn't necessarily go all the way we would have preferred in that case.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Any further questions? Counsel O'Clare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I was just wondering, this isn't really contract-related, but I did have a couple of questions from citizens today, and I was wondering if somebody could just bring, like, a very brief synopsis of, you know, the project and the amount of money that we're spending and how integral it is to the, to the town-wide overhaul of our financial system.
Sure. The, the school has been looking for a little while to make a change in the software. They haven't been happy with KVS, and there has also been a lot of turnover there as well. So, the Director of Finance came and talked to me about it, about their interest in going towards Munis, who was on the state bid list. We did talk about it and agreed that it would be in the best interest of the town for both the town and the school to continue to be on the same system, and that we both migrate to Munis. So, we came, a copy was in your packet, we came up with an MOU, memorandum of understanding between the town and the school. And the, the town agreed to pay $310,000. $200,000 was appropriated from free cash, if you remember. And then the balance is going to come in year three when we pay the, the annual fee for the year. And the school has agreed to pay $320,000, which is going to be a combination of budget appropriations, and they also have a, at least one grant that they're using for the, for the Munis conversion. So we have $630,000 that was available for the conversion. So we worked with Munis, and they came together with the contractor. At first, we weren't sure, because we didn't realize that the travel wasn't included in what they were quoting us, so we had to go back a little bit to the drawing board to make sure that we had enough money to cover everything. So the contract total in here, I believe, and I'll just quickly turn to in Exhibit The contract total is $590,058 with the travel at $38,220. Now that's going to include any conversion we need and the implementation. And as we go along, we, we have a list of the different modules that we want to convert or that need to be implemented, and we might, we might find that we might not need something as we go along. This is a very comprehensive list. Maybe we need something else, so there'll be a few items that may be tweaked along the way. But this will give us a, the Software as a Service Agreement with Munis, who has the the most clients in, generally in Massachusetts. So, it is, as someone had said, it's kind of like the, you know, the high-end version of the software. We can utilize a lot of different things that we can't do now with KVS. Employees will be able, as an example, employees will be able to go into the system, put in their own hours. It's kind of like a self-service. They can go in there and, you know, get some information on their payroll if they wanted to change some of their withholdings, things like that. And it's going to be very user-friendly. And we're going to try to implement everything we can upfront, so that, you know, sometimes if you say, oh, maybe we'll do it later, we usually don't get back to doing it. Is there anything else that you think you'd, that's kind of a synopsis of how it came to be and where we are today. And we've worked really hard to get it where it is. Is there anything else you think you might want a little bit more info on, or...
Yeah, I just, I want to clarify. I'm 100% in support of this. I mean, is there anything else as far as, you know, the benefits as far as we're going to see as a town when you start implementing it town-wide?
I'll defer, I know Tommy Andrew wants to say a little something, or Seth, maybe I'll defer to Seth for a minute, so he can talk about on the school side of it.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everyone. My name is Seth Rousin. I'm here from the Southbridge Public Schools. So, let me walk through at least some of the benefits of this new system. And so, first of all, the current financial system that we run all of our finances, we pay all of our bills, we run our payroll through, was implemented at a time in terms of technology, when the most popular search engine was Ask Jeeves, when the most popular cellphone was a flip phone, and it was before sort of the most common social media was sort of MySpace and Friendster. The world has come a long way since then, and for you as public officials, this is a system that will be able to be much better for both your employees, for vendors doing business, it's much more user-friendly, and also for citizens, to ensure that their tax dollars are used appropriately. So, first from an employee perspective, Karen noted before, employees now will have much more assurances that they're being paid properly, they're able to go online, change deductions. They don't need to keep calling somebody, say, hey, what was this? Can I get this tax form? It'll all be online. As well as, they will be notified through their phone, a couple days even before payroll's run, to say, hey, here's a preview of your paycheck. If it's not right, they can go in, and there actually will be a window there to make corrections and make adjustments accordingly. This is a much more, the confidence you should have in terms of running payroll should be much, much higher with this system than the current system we have right now. And in terms of liability, as mentioned before, you miss payroll, every day you miss it, you're liable three times the amount of that payroll. So, you as a town council should have much more confidence that this system is being run properly for your employees. From a vendor perspective, before, as somebody coming into the school department just about a year ago now, there were many calls from vendors saying, what's going on with this payment? Vendors will have the same sort of process as their employees. They can log in. They can see how much they've been paid to date. They can see where their bills are along the way. So, they'll have much more assurances of payments and not necessarily have to pick up a phone, call somebody, wait to see the answer. And from your perspective, in terms of the city, from the town council, I would say, first of all, the integration of this is huge, because now your key finance leaders will be able to spend their time much more instead of managing paper processes, which is a lot of what this is, a lot of paper backup. Everything now moves electronically. There's a workflow process. Things can be approved along the way, and they don't have to say, wait, did that thing get missing? Forms are now online. So, there's that. And so, that means that frees up your finance leaders to spend time analyzing, how are we spending? Can we find more efficient ways to do it? How can I get you the information in a much easier way and spend more time in terms of analysis and reporting than compliance, paper-based processes? And finally, too, from a citizen perspective, there are many other benefits that will come later on in the implementation process, that will give your citizens a much better experience in paying bills and having a much healthier process than the current process it is to date.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, and I apologize for kind of yelling. I was trying to talk to Karen about the payroll part of it. One of the things that I've hated since I've been here is the fact that employees, when you get your paycheck, some of you who work in the private sector will see your vacation days are all there, and as you use them, they fall off, and sick time and all that. Here, it's all manual. And I'm looking forward to where all of a sudden, the employees can all look at their paychecks and determine how many sick days they have left, how many vacation time they have left, and all that will be electronic. So, everybody can see that reporting much better. I think that's going to be one of the things in the module, right, that we're going to implement, right? And I think that will make a tremendous benefit to the employees and frankly, to the management, to be able to look and see who's got what time left. It's very difficult for me as a manager to know who's got time left and who doesn't. It's just not a good process.
Do you have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, if I could just add, I know Council Oakley asked, because taxpayers were asking, on the tax collection side, taxpayer can log in, they can see their bills, they can see if their mortgage company has paid their taxes, they can see if they've paid their taxes, they can, at the end of the year, our busiest time of year is when the excise taxes go out, but it's also tax time. So, we receive hundreds of phone calls every day from citizens asking, how much did I pay in taxes last year? Go online. You can do it yourself. So, that's probably what the citizens will see for the most part, is on the tax collection side.
Thank you. Council Steve?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask. And the other question I was going to ask is if somebody could just kind of quickly summarize, for the sake of people out there, obviously, we hear constantly about systems getting hacked and all that stuff. So, could you summarize a little bit about the financial security aspect of this system and how it will protect citizens' financial data?
That's the couple.
If you can.
So, unfortunately, we'll, Conoyar couldn't be here tonight. I will take my best stab at it.
Okay.
So, this is a cloud-hosted system, so everything is stored in the cloud, but it is also backed up in multiple locations. So, it was mentioned before that the company is headquartered in Maine, so all of the data will be stored there, as well as they have another backup system on top of that, so that in case something happened to their facility in Maine, all of the data is backed up there. And as an example, in terms of hypothetically with emergencies, Munis was actually the financial system that was used in New Orleans. And so, after Hurricane Katrina, when that hit and everything went down, Munis was still able to run uninterrupted, having all the historical records, and did not miss time in terms of making payroll and other systems like that, because it was hosted remotely.
Okay, if I can follow up with that, because that's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is, what's in the system to protect it so people don't have it, so hackers can't get in and steal individuals', individual citizens' financial data?
Mr. Town Manager?
If somebody can answer it.
Thank you, Council Steve. It's a very good question, and there's all kinds of software that's on the market, security software that companies like Munis use. So, they actually have firewalls and things that block people from getting in. It's all password, it's all encrypted data. So, there's just a host of different software that's available to stop what you're saying, that protects those systems before you ever get in and out of it. That's why it's all password, and so, you know, when you go in, you have to have certain passwords to get in. But they, a company like this, a big company like this, will use high-end software. I can't think of, when I was in this business, the name of the types of software used, but there's a whole slew of major companies that build this kind of software for exactly the purpose that you have in mind.
So, will citizens have their own passwords for their information?
Right, they'll be, right, everybody will have their own passwords and permissions to get through, and there's all kinds of encryption and everything else to get through. So, there's, like, again, it's a specialized software that looks at this specific purpose. What it does is it, encryption basically takes the data and mixes it all up and jumbles it up, and then the system puts it all back together again. So, that's part of the systems they use to protect the software, protect the hardware that's behind the firewalls and stuff, so that, you know, there's two different sets. There's a bunch of software that protects kind of the front end of the system, and when you were talking about disaster recovery, that's after the hardware's there. If something actually happens to the hardware, disaster recovery is the backup of the hardware. So, it's a combination of different things that protect the software.
Did you have a first question, Council?
Well, yeah, I had wanted to just, yeah, I wasn't 100% done, but I just wanted to thank, you know, everybody who answered the questions that I had and the follow-up questions. I think that was very sufficient. You know, there are some people that see this amount of money and are a little bit sticker-shocked, and it's good that they have a full understanding as to what we're voting on. So, thank you.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Question, just since we're indulging a little bit and talking about the benefits, the value, I wonder if the town manager might speculate, just for refreshing us, on the procurement method that was used for the software package?
So, I believe that this went through the state bid system. Is that correct? This is a, there's a variety of ways you can do it. You can put out your own thing, your own invitation to bid for this type of software, requests for proposals. Munis is such a big system statewide, and frankly, I think it's throughout different states, that you can go right onto the state bid list, and you don't have to go through the bidding process. The state effectively has done all that work for you. So, that was the method used for this particular purchase.
Okay. The reason I ask it, more or less coming from the state bid list, amounts to a sole source procurement?
Um, I don't know if you'd describe it that way, because, for our purposes, yes, Munis is a trademark system. But when the state puts it out, they put it out to all different types of companies. So, they do that legwork, so they put it out, they could put it out to every different software company in the area, KVS and Munis and everything else. They do all that work for you. But as far as the town, you're correct. It's, I don't know if there's other companies on the bid list, but this is the major company that most towns are using. So, again, I think they've looked at a variety of vendors for us instead of us doing it.
Okay, I understand that. I guess my real concern is that we see an additional $38,220 for travel-related expenses, which should have been included in any initial proposal or bid. So, was it the town that didn't include it in evaluating, or was it the vendor that chose not to include it so they could come back to the town for money?
So, that's a, it's a good question. As you know, this was discussed in a subcommittee when they had the discussion, and actually, I think former Council Clements brought out this discussion as well. In the original state bid list, it was not included, and somewhere between the time that we decided to purchase it and the time we actually made the contract, they came up with this issue, and we had to deal with it. But we originally did not believe this was part, we thought it was included in the contract, and they said it wasn't. So, there was a, I guess you'd call it a miscommunication between the two. But at some point, we were basically told if we wanted it, it was going to cost us this much. So, what happened is, there were some negotiations between our side and them, and we found some other cuts to make so that it would stay under the total value of the contract. So, they reduced some other services, and we ended up paying for this service. So, that, it's somewhat washed at the end, but you're correct. There was a period where we expected it was included, and we found out it wasn't.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, before we vote, I'm very glad that the town has finally moved to Munis. I know, as a member of the school committee going back 15 years ago, we had asked the town to consider moving to Munis way back 15 years ago, because I know how difficult on the school side it was for us to just get simple reports, run those payrolls, and also the vacation time and tracking of that. It was a nightmare on the school side as well. So, I'm very happy that the town is finally making this move. We knew back then that it was a huge financial cost at that time. We're a little late in getting to the table. We probably would have saved a lot more money if we had moved forward proactively then, but it is what it is. So, I'm glad that we're going to move forward with this. So, as far as your question on state bid list, I know as a former municipal police chief, we used the state bid list quite a bit. They do go out for a variety of sources. We use it for cruises and everything, and they come up with the best price. So, if it's on the state bid list, then we're good to go. It may be a sole source based on the bid list, but I don't know. But it is, it is a great way to do procurement on the town side. So, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Just for the record, I did contest this back during the free cash conversation, and I'll be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed. Council Nash is opposed. Okay. Item 14, vote to approve the changes as highlighted to the town of Southbridge Personnel Rules and Regulations. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
Just briefly, a lot of the changes in here are state requirements, and we cleaned up some wording to deal with a variety of local issues. But there's nothing all that controversial in here. It deals with things like domestic violence. It makes the law clearer so that all employees understand exactly what our domestic violence policies are. It deals with things like breaks and comp time for a few employees, but it's rather minor in nature, but important that we pass this and put it into effect.
Council Steve's?
If I just want to add to that a little bit, that came through GenGov, and we approved it 4-0. One of the points that actually jumped out at me as far as that discussion goes is that one of the key changes will affect the police department in that it allows people who work for our police department to actually live in the Connecticut side of the line. Basically, that just means Woodstock, because Woodstock's huge. But, so, as opposed to previously, you couldn't live in Connecticut and work here, even though it's five minutes away, which didn't make a whole lot of sense.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous vote, President. Item 15, vote to ratify the Tax Increment Finance, TIF, agreement between Hardline Heat Treating Incorporated and the town of Southbridge, which the town requests that the project be designated as a certified project for 10 years. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Council DePietro.
Mr. Chair, unfortunately, I'm going to have to abstain from this vote. However, I would recommend to all the councils that...
You can't recommend anything. You have to recuse yourself, Council.
Kaboom?
Yeah.
Should I?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I live there.
Okay, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So, Council DePietro is recusing himself from any discussion relative to this topic due to some possible conflict of interest. So, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Rosemary, obviously, is on her way to the podium. This is something that Rosemary's been working quite hard on, and I appreciate the work that's done by Councilor Adams has been working with Rosemary on this particular issue as well. And just talk briefly about the overall benefit of this, and then I'll let Rosemary talk about the specific details. The overall benefit of a TIF, or Tax Incremental Financing, is to help one of our manufacturers increase their productivity and expand in Southbridge instead of leaving Southbridge. So, in this particular case, Hardline Heat Treating Inc. is looking to expand their facility a great deal and adding 10 new employees. This is going to add to the tax rolls of the town of Southbridge and benefit citizens over the long run. It also helps a manufacturer in its early stages, when they're trying to expand. There's a lot of upfront capital costs involved from these type of companies, and it's difficult to make that upfront capital costs back in a real short period of time. Towns all throughout Massachusetts do this as an economic development tool to increase business in their community. Obviously, we want to do everything we can to keep our manufacturers here in Southbridge. We don't want them to leave. In fact, we'd love to attract more to the town, and it's not an easy thing to do. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Rosemary Shivers. And Rosemary, I was asked, was, I think, a minor tweak to this in between, could you explain what that minor tweak was?
Yes. So, the minor tweak was the investment...
Hold on, Rosemary, just procedurally, did we take a motion on this yet to open discussion?
Oh.
I don't.
I don't.
We did, okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. So, there were a couple of tweaks to the TIF agreement from the, what was shown at the PND Subcommittee meeting. Those tweaks were that the total investment was $100,000 higher. And that was, you know, as the manufacturer, Mr. Chulu, is kind of going through this process and still going through his analysis, you know, it was, I wanted to make sure that that number was reflected properly. And, I'm sorry, it was 1.8 million, which is the renovation to the building, which made the total investment 3.2. The other tweak was, you know, whenever you have any kind of construction project, the start date is kind of a moving target. There's a lot of things, hurdles that can come into place. So, when Mr. Chulu gave us a start date for this project, it was his best guesstimate. So, the state provides a way, and this is new from when I used to work for this agency, they provide a way for, in the application, the community to check off, to say, this is the start date of the TIF as we have approved it, but it will either be that start date or the month in which the certificate of occupancy is issued. Because obviously, you know, we want this benefit. We don't want any of it to be lost. So, that's kind of a way to kind of cover your basis. So, those were the kind of pretty small tweaks, and I'll just, I want to just give a quick introduction, and then I would like to kind of pass it on to a member of the EDC, who's here to represent the recommendation from the EDC, and to Mr. Chulu, who he tells his story better than anyone. So, as the town manager said, this is a growing manufacturer in town. They treat, they heat treat various types of metals. They are a growing company. Mr. Chulu just started this company in '03. He now is up to 36 employees. He is kind of bursting at the seams in two of the buildings that he leases on Ashland Ave. I know, for at least two years now, he has been working very, very hard to find a way to expand, because as long as he has these physical limitations, he will be unable to expand and get into the markets that he needs to get into, which is aerospace and additional military and defense equipment. So, he spent quite a lot of money and time getting some engineered plans to build on some property in Southbridge, only to discover that the site cost would be over $2 million, and realized that that wasn't the right move for him. As, when you hear from him, you realize he's a very smart, frugal businessman, and that's how he's been able to succeed. So, he then decided to look at the buildings that he already occupies and had engineers take a look to see what kind of creative ways they could expand the usable space of those buildings and the actual full space of those buildings. So, I've been in touch with him on and off for the last couple of years, and so now, this is why we're before you. So, a TIF is a break on the new taxes that will be generated if this manufacturer proceeds with the investment. So, the plan is to purchase these two buildings, to renovate them extensively after demolishing portions of them, and then the occupancy of the building right now, the first building that he plans to renovate, is tentatively planned for springtime, January, February of '20. So, 2020. So, along with a TIF, which is a break on that, the new taxes being generated by the increase in value of those properties, the state, by the town agreeing to this TIF tonight, the state, that makes this gentleman eligible for a investment. the state, that makes this gentleman eligible for an investment tax credit on his state taxes. So that can be even more lucrative for him and helpful for him than what the town is considering tonight. So again, the total investment is 3.2 million dollars. The purchase of the two properties is about $1 million, 1.8 million in renovations and about $400,000 in new equipment and machinery. He has 36 jobs and he is projecting an increase in 10 new jobs over the next four years. So if there's no more questions for me, I'll turn it over to...
Question?
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, Rosemary, I know you increased by 100,000, so I'm looking at the application form itself, still says 3.1 million on it.
On the which?
Page number three?
Of the TIF?
The application.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll have to...
I'm sorry, the EDIP, not the TIF, the EDIP application.
Okay, so what you see, that's the preliminary application, right? And so that was the figure I had when we...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it got changed.
So what's happened since then is a supplementary application has been done, which is required. And usually by the time a company submits a supplementary, there's been some more analysis done and that's how he arrived at the 3.2.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Council Adams.
So I'd like to introduce Durgesh Vaidya, who is one of the members of the Economic Development Commission and he'll talk to you about his recommendation on this TIF.
Thank you, Rosemary. Good evening, council members. In taking into account this application, the EDC gave some consideration to the following. One is to look at the best economic welfare for the Town of Southbridge. In doing so, when we looked at the numbers, we took into account that providing this TIF would retain the 100-plus thousand dollars in taxes that the company is currently paying and then formed a ramp, which as the town manager said, provides the incentive initially upfront where there are a lot of upfront costs to defray some of that burden from the company, but then taper it down so that over a 10-year period, the economic benefit to the company as well as the additional taxes accrued by the town balance out. So it's a win-win situation. And the economic benefit to the company, we believe, justifies the retention of 36 jobs as well as 10 additional jobs that will be added. This is keeping in line with the mission of the Economic Development Commission and ultimately the best welfare for the Town of Southbridge. So that's what backed our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this project.
Thank you.
So I'd like to invite Mr. Robert Chuloo to come up and just give you some information about his company and his project.
I'm not very good at this, so I apologize. My company, we started it, as Rosemary said, officially opened for business in May of 2004. We started the endeavor around 2003. It took a very long time to get a telephone pole moved, almost nine months and it almost bankrupted us. We were self-funded. In September of 2003, I had to let the four employees that we had that was trying to get it off the ground, had to lay them off and I took a full-time job. And I went, my nights and my weekends, I proceeded to put this building together. In May of 2004, I approached one of my former coworkers and said, you know, we need somebody to at least man this. And we did this for a couple of years, then finally I quit my full-time job and went in. You know, at that time, we only had about six employees. Fast forwarding a little bit, we in 2009 grew large enough where we were able to absorb one of our competitors out of Springfield. The markets that we're in is firearms, medical, automotives. Right now, we have substantial military contract through one of our customers that's going through. So we have 36 employees now. One of the reasons for the TIF is we're really recognizing the need for education. We've done a pretty good job of trying to spend the time with employees, but we've got to reach out to the outside and help us at this stage in the game and it's a huge cost, but an important one. And we really want to invest in unskilled labor and bring them up to a level where they can make a really good wage. The average wages in our building right now are anywhere between 40 and 55,000 and that's an unskilled laborer, you know, and it actually can go higher than that. But it's a significant investment on our part, time-wise, money-wise. The other problem we're running into is power. Our power, just to give you an example of what we're paying, our average bill is somewhere in the vicinity of 30, between 30 and 40,000 a month. We're coming to the end of a five-year contract. We do a pretty good job of bidding it out and right now because of coal plants are shutting down and a nuclear plant being shut down, just supply and demand is driving the cost. We're looking at this November, a potential 30% increase in our power. That is just based on a number I just told you. Do the math. That is a big number. It couldn't have happened at a worse time because now we're doing this project and we're committed to this project. We have got to move forward as a company in order to not get absorbed. The aerospace that we're going after is an ADCAP accreditation. It allows us to do flight components or land-based turbines. That will allow us to just increase our revenue stream into a whole different direction as well as continue to do what we're doing now. The equipment investment of 400,000, there's several pieces of equipment, some small, some large, but that walks hand-in-hand with the ADCAP accreditation. Is there any questions?
Come, Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to let everybody know that a few years ago, I ran into this gentleman who was looking at expanding his company and lo and behold, here we are today, hopefully expanding your company. Rosemary, the EDC, and Mr. Chuloo have given great briefs, have spent a lot of time working on this. I want to thank the fact that you had the staff member, oh, staff members working so hard on this to help a company, the fact the citizens were willing to help the company, are willing to help the company, and the gentleman that owns the company get up here and ask for a little bit of help. So at that time, I would be voting yes enthusiastically and this is part of the economic development of this town moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Adams. Thank you very much. When Rosemary asked me to sit in on a brief on this project, I didn't even realize you were in town. So I thank you for staying in town and our Economic Development Commission and our planning economic team to keep a company such as yours in our community with the vision that you have. You know, I look at it, TIFs are always a controversial topic sometimes, but you know, it's that cost-benefit analysis. So I look at it as we have a piece of property which you've outgrown that you're willing to invest substantial amounts of money in and be a fabric of our community. And by us giving something to you, you're growing exponentially, whereas we could just, if we voted no, it just stays empty and ends up like some of the other mill buildings that we have. So I think that's really, when we look at these projects, that's the mindset that you have to have. So again, thank you very much for investing in our community and investing in our workers because there are a lot of that unskilled labor that you're willing to work with and train for a viable workforce. So thank you very much. I'll be supporting this TIF tonight. Anything further? Seeing no further discussion. On this matter, I'm going to request a roll call vote for this, okay, because of the financial impact and the process, okay? So, okay, roll call?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council O'Clair?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council DePietro?
Council DePietro is recused, so make sure you note that.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Morales?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Unanimous of those present. Thank you very much and we look forward to working with you in the future and I look forward to touring your facility someday. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, Rosemary and Morales. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the second reading of amendments to the Southbridge Zoning Bylaw introducing a new definition in Article 3, Definitions, Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD. Section 300.541A, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC. Section 300.541B, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC. Add in Article 5, Section 502.35, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC. Allow in such use with a special permit in a single-family residential, retain business, general, retail business, that should be, general business, light industrial, heavy industrial, zoning districts, business opportunity districts in the central core, and add in Article 5, Section 502.36, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC. Allow in such use with a special permit in retail business, general business, light industrial, heavy industrial, zoning districts, business opportunity districts, and the central core, and add in Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. First reading was August 13, 2018. This is the second reading and Councilor Daniels is up tonight first and you can start with the definitions, Section 3.
Definitions, Section 3. Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD. An entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known hereafter as an RMD, that acquires, cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana, products containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers, to be conducted entirely within a secure facility with no drive-through services. Unless otherwise specified, an RMD refers to the site or sites of dispensing, cultivation, distribution, and preparation of marijuana. For the purposes of this bylaw, RMD shall be referred to as Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, and Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC. Section 300.541A, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC. An entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known as a Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, that cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, or distributes marijuana, products containing marijuana, and related supplies to a qualified Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC. Section 300.541B, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC. An entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known as a Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, that acquires, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, sells, dispenses, or administers marijuana, products containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers. Unless otherwise specified, RMMDC refers to the site or sites of dispensing and preparation Add Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Section 1901, Purpose. It is the purpose and intent of this section of the zoning bylaw to provide for the limited establishment of registered marijuana dispensaries known hereafter as RMD as they are authorized by the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana Act, Massachusetts General Laws cited 94C and state regulations adopted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, under 105 CMR 725.000. The implementation of the Act for the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana in locations suitable for lawful RMDs to minimize any adverse impacts on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, playgrounds, and other areas where children commonly congregate, local historic districts, and other areas that are incompatible with such uses, and for the location of RMDs where they may be readily monitored by law enforcement for health and public safety purposes. It is neither the purpose nor intent of this section of the bylaw to supersede any federal or state laws governing the sale or distribution of narcotic drugs. Section 1902, applicability. This section applies to registered marijuana dispensaries, RMD, to be constructed after the effective date of this section. The commercial cultivation, production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail, or wholesale sale, trade, distribution, or dispensing of marijuana for medical use is prohibited unless permitted or established as an RMD under this Article 19. An RMD may be permitted upon application to and the granting of a special permit and site plan, approval by the planning board acting as the special permit granting authority as specified in Section 701.1 of the Southbridge zoning bylaws. Section 1902.1, Definitions. The following definition has been added to Article 3 of the Southbridge zoning bylaws. Registered Marijuana Dispensary. Changes and additions to Article 5 have been included to identify Registered Marijuana Dispensary as a use. Where not explicitly defined in the zoning bylaws, terms used in this section shall be interpreted as defined in the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94C, and the Department of Public Health Regulations promulgated thereunder, 105 CMR 725.000. Section 1903, Requirements for All Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Section 1903.1, Application Requirements. No RMD shall commence operations without first applying for and receiving site plan approval and the grant of a special permit from the planning board acting as the special permit granting authority. A special permit shall be granted provided that the planning board finds that the applicant has complied with all the terms, requirements, conditions, and procedures of Section 701.1 of the Southbridge zoning bylaw in addition to the requirements of this section. Site plan approval shall be granted provided that the planning board finds that the applicant has complied with all the terms, requirements, conditions, and procedures of Sections 701A and 705 of the Southbridge zoning bylaw in addition to the requirements of this section. The commercial cultivation, unless it meets the requirements for an agricultural or horticultural exemption under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3, or is a hardship cultivation as allowed by state law or regulation, production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail, or wholesale sale, trade, distribution, or dispensing of marijuana for medical use is prohibited unless permitted as an RMD under this section. In addition to the materials required under Sections 701 and 701A.15, the applicant shall include: A) a copy of its certificate of registration to operate an RMD issued by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health; B) a proposed timeline for achieving operation of the RMD and evidence that the applicant will be ready to operate within that proposed timeline; C) a statement indicating the need for an RMD in the Town of Southbridge and the projected service area, including the current patient population amounts in that service area; D) evidence that the applicant has adequate liability insurance; E) a copy of the detailed written operating procedures as required by the Massachusetts Department of Health in... of Health in 105 CMR 725.105, or its successor regulation, and as otherwise required by other applicable law or regulation; F) locations of all other RMDs in Worcester County; G) a copy of the policies and procedures for patient or personal caregiver home delivery required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD; H) a copy of the policies and procedures for the transfer, acquisition, or sale of marijuana between the RMD and another or independent testing laboratory as required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health; I) a copy of the policies and procedures for patient or personal caregiver home delivery required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD; J) a copy of proposed waste disposal procedures; K) a description and list of any waivers granted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD; L) details of proposed water usage and wastewater plans for any site that will include cultivation; M) evidence of the applicant's right to use the proposed site of the RMD facility such as a deed, lease, or other real estate instrument; additionally, if a cultivation facility, evidence of contract or agreement to grow marijuana for a certified dispensary; N) if the applicant is a business organization, a statement under oath disclosing all of its owners, shareholders, partners, members, managers, directors, officers, or other similarly situated individuals and entities and their addresses. If any of these above entities are business organizations rather than individuals, the applicant must disclose the identity of the owners of such entities or business organizations for each level of ownership until the disclosure contains the names of all individuals and their addresses; O) a detailed floor plan of the premises of the proposed RMD that identifies the square footage available and describes the functional areas of the RMD, including areas for any preparation of marijuana-infused products or open-air cultivation; P) a description of the security measures, including employee security policies, required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD; Q) proposed security measures for the RMD, including lighting, fencing, storage, gates, and alarms to ensure the safety of persons and to protect the premises from theft; R) detailed site plans that include all of the information required under Section 701A of the Southbridge zoning bylaw, including distances to any of the uses identified in Section 1903.2 below. The planning board shall refer copies of the application to the Department of Inspection Services, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and any other board, if warranted, to receive written comments related to community and environmental impact, public safety, traffic, municipal facilities and services, water supply, utility infrastructure, and wastewater.
Counselor Daniels, are they all set?
You want me to keep going? I'll keep going.
All right, go ahead, you're doing well.
All right. Section—section 1903.2, Site Restrictions. A) An RMD facility shall not be located within 500 feet of the following or 250 feet if located in the central core as measured in a straight line from the building and/or area actively used. One, public or private school, preschool, primary or secondary school, dance or gymnastics school, martial arts school, licensed daycare center, or any other facility where children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis under 105 CMR 725.110A14; or two, a public library; or three, a playground, athletic field, or any other recreational areas where children commonly congregate under CMR 725.110A14 that are not contained within a building. B) No RMMCC is to be located within 100 feet of any abutting occupied residence in a residential zoning district as measured in a straight line from existing structure to proposed development. Two, 250 feet of any nonconforming residential structures in nonresidential districts as measured in a straight line from existing structure to proposed development. C) No RMMDC is to be located within 250 feet of any residential zoning district, residential structure, or any nonconforming residential structures in nonresidential districts. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the residential zone boundary line or from existing structure to proposed development. D) No marijuana or marijuana-based products shall be sold, or grown, or cultivated in motels and dormitories, or inside a mobile structure such as a cargo container, motor vehicle, or other similar nonpermanent enclosure. E) No RMD shall have drive-through services. F) No smoking, burning, or consumption of any product containing marijuana or marijuana-related products shall be permitted on the premises. G) Exterior signs shall identify only the name of the RMD but shall not display advertisements for marijuana or any brand name, nor shall marijuana—marijuana-infused products or associated products be displayed or clearly visible to a person from the exterior of the RMD. All exterior building openings, entries, and windows shall be screened in such a manner as to prevent the public's view of the interior from any public or private way or from any abutting property. H) Hours of operation for any RMD shall be established by the planning board, but in no event shall said facilities be open and/or operating between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., including delivery services. I) If cultivation facility, a six-foot fence or screening with security tops should be erected—and I think I'll call it there.
Counselor Adams, finish off.
Section 1903.3, Location Waiver. The distance requirements may be reduced at the discretion of the planning board through the special permit application if the applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment will employ adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana to minors. Section 1903.4, Conditions. The planning board, as special permit granting authority, shall attach the following conditions to all RMD special permits, including, but not limited to, applicable site-specific conditions as determined by the board in accordance with Section 701.1 of this bylaw in addition to 105 CMR 725.000. A) The special permit shall remain exclusively—with the applicant, who shall also be known as permit holder after the granting of the special permit, who shall be the owner of—owner or lessee of—or lesssee of the premises described in the application as a site for the proposed RMD, shall terminate automatically on the date there is a voluntary or involuntary separation of the applicant's title or leasehold interior in the premises of the applicant's or the applicant's right to occupy the premises terminates for any reason. B) Each RMD permitted under the zoning bylaw shall, as a condition of its special permit, file an annual report to the planning board and the town clerk in providing a copy of all current applicable state licenses and registrations for the RMD and/or its owners. Any updated operating policies required under 105 CMR 725.105 or by the Department of Public Health, the current insurance policies for the RMD, and demonstrated compliance with the conditions of the special permit. C) The permit holder shall file a copy of any incident report required under 105 CMR 725.110F with the inspector of the buildings, police chief, and the planning board within 24 hours of creation by the RMD. Such reports may be redacted as necessary to comply with any applicable state or federal laws and regulations. D) The permit holder shall file a copy of any deficiency statement, plan of correction, summary cease-and-desist order, quarantine order, summary suspension order, or limited sales, notice of a hearing or final action issued by DPH or the Division of Administrative Laws, appeals as applicable regarding the RMD with the Department of Inspection Services, Police Department, and the planning board within 48 hours of receipt by the RMD. E) The permit holder shall provide to the Department of Inspection Services and Police Department the name, telephone number, and electronic mail address of a contact person in the event that such person needs to be contacted after regular business hours to address any urgent issue. Such contact information shall be kept updated by the permit holder. F) The special permit shall lapse upon the expiration or termination of the applicant's registration by DPH. G) The permit holder shall notify the Department of Inspection Services and Police Department and Planning Board in writing within 48 hours of cessation of operation of the RMD or the expiration or termination of the permit holder's registration with the DPH. The legal entity and structure of the applicant/permit holder shall not change as represented in compliance Section 1903.1N. Section 1903.5, Abandonment or Discontinuance of Use. A) A special permit granted under this section is nontransferable and shall have a term limit—limited to the duration of the applicant's ownership or leasing of the premises as an RMD dependent on the applicant's continued existence as the same legal entity. Any violation of Sections 1903.4H shall be considered a transfer for purposes of this bylaw. B) An RMD shall be required to remove all material, plants, equipment—plants, equipment, and other paraphernalia in compliance with 105 CMR 725.105JNO prior to surrendering the state-issued licenses or permits or within six months of CCing operations, whichever comes first. Section 1904, Severability. All other applicable provisions of the Southbridge zoning bylaw shall also apply to this section. If any section or portion of this bylaw is ruled invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such ruling will not affect the validity of the remainder of this bylaw. Amend Section 502, Table of Use Regulations to add Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC, and allow in single-family residential, retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry, zoning districts, business opportunity district, and central core with a special permit under Section 502.35, and add Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, and allow in retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry, zoning districts, business opportunity district, and central core with a special permit under Section 502.36.
You want to go on with the table?
Yeah.
Okay. Table of Use Regulations, 502-point—502.3, Other Institutional Uses. 502.35, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC, single-family, special permit; two-family, no; multi-family, no; retail business, special permit; general business, special permit; light industry, special permit; heavy industry, special permit; business opportunity district, special permit; and central core, special permit. 502.36, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, single-family, no; two-family, no; multi-family, no; retail business, special permit; general business, special permit; light industry, special permit; heavy industry, special permit; business opportunity district, special permit; central core, special permit. Thank you, councilors, for the reading. I saw you sneak away. Counselor O'Clair, you'll be first up next for me. So, do we have any questions? Counselor Steves?
Yeah, one quick thing that kind of jumped out at me under—it's the—section 1903.1, going down to item L. I'd love to see if we can throw in a—make it—a phrase—it—throw in something else here. Since it is a health-related issue, why don't we add—I'd like to see us add fertilizer or pesticide use into that line there? Make it details of proposed fertilizer or pesticide use, water—water usage, and wastewater plans? Well, fertilizer and pesticide use, water uses and wastewater plans? For any site, blah, blah, blah. I always think—I think under Mass. General Law—that by law, they're required to be organic, but it would be nice to be able to see exactly what they're using.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that probably it would be—also be part of the DPH's review, but I think that we can—that would be appropriate to add, or at least addressing that if there's going to be using those types of, you know, materials for the cultivation purposes. So how would you like that to read?
I was thinking having it read as details of proposed fertilizer, pesticide, water usage, and wastewater plans for any site that will include cultivation.
Details of proposed fertilizer usage, water usage, and wastewater plans.
No, fertilizer, pesticide, water usage, and wastewater plans.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so this was the second reading. Our next meeting will be the third and final reading of this proposed zoning bylaw amendment for medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries, at which time, after the third reading, we will be taking a vote. So that will be the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Councilors' forum. We'll start with Counselor Nash tonight. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. I have a few things this evening. First of all, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Southbridge Police Department, Southbridge Fire Department, State Rep. Peter Durant, State Senator Ryan Fatman, United Lens, BJ's, Sturbridge Metallurgical, Walmart, Big Y, Frito-Lay, and Pepsi-Cola for their generous donations toward a wonderful event this past weekend that I attended and volunteered at on behalf of House of Destiny. They gave out 172 backpacks that were stuffed with school supplies to children of the community. 413 people ended up attending, and this was a wonderful back-to-school block party. So my thanks to all of those generous sponsors, and I'll also thank Counselor Adams for attending and speaking with residents, as well as the Senator and Representative Durant. Quick note that Rep. Durant and Senator Fatman provided generous donations of food. I'd also like to bring to the council's attention that I anticipate missing Thursday night's meeting that I assume got posted today, a special town council meeting, which most likely accounts for goals and objectives. And I've discussed this with the chair, he's aware of my circumstance. I will see if that changes. I'll also take a moment, beyond the TIF, I sent an email off to Rosemarie that she could share with her department and with Ken this last week, complimenting the economic development and planning group for the fantastic work and job that they've been doing. That's a key department in the future of Southbridge, and I'm pleased, and every little bit helps. I hope that we all take a moment to thank them for the effort and for—they're always availing themselves to answering our questions as councilors. I'll also point out that there was an incident last week that evidently a few people were talking about. When it comes to conversation in the back of the room, I appreciate the chair's quick action at my request to stymie the conversation. People don't realize, because when you watch on television or on YouTube, that the acoustics in this room are actually terrible. I can never hear Counselor Steves, we all end up pointing over to him. No offense, Gus. And any little bit of distraction does actually affect me. I have a hard enough time seeing because of my sensitivity to the light and beyond that. I just want to apologize if anyone was offended, but I appreciate the chair's action to make it a little easier. I'd also like to mention that—to the chairman and town manager, I sent you a synopsis of activity from the Education Human Services Subcommittee from last year for fiscal year 2018. I also pointed out that within council rules and regulations, it's supposed to come from the Subcommittee before the previous session's end. However, I took the liberty and just summarized from our meeting minutes some of the accomplishments, and they were very general. In that draft, I—I pointed out some of the appointments that were made, the discussions that were had. I am open to bringing that to Subcommittee at your recommendation, however, the Subcommittee has changed, as you're very well aware. So if you don't like the way that I've presented it, or if you prefer that I bring it to Subcommittee, I'll await your direction. I appreciate the effort on an annual report run. You always do a good job with that, and I'm glad to see, hopefully, all the Subcommittee's, boards, commissions, and committees participating this year. I'd also like to make a quick request, and that is for any resident that's trying to contact me. You can find my telephone number—it's my cellphone—on the Town Council page on the town of Southbridge website. I prefer to not be contacted on Facebook through my personal page. I am always vigilant about open meeting law and deliberation when it comes to councilors, but as far as I'm concerned, if you want to use Facebook, go to my counselor page so that it's a matter of public record. I prefer to be called on my cellphone. I don't like text messages. You can email me, ricknashsb@gmail.com. 978-660-0808 is my cell, and I appreciate your cooperation with that. And with that, thank you very much.
And thank you, Counselor Nash, for sending that to me, and we will look—I'll discuss it with the other chairs so that we can get that together for the town annual report. I think that goes to some of the goals that we talked about, having them done when the year ends, so that new council starts with a fresh slate. So thank you. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks to all the councilors who had to read through the mundane but certainly necessary reading of the marijuana law. Much appreciated. Just an announcement that Department of Public Works meeting—Subcommittee meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, August 20. on Tuesday, August 28th at 6:00 PM. I would encourage all councilors to attend, and that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor DePietro. Councilor Morales?
I'm all set, thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Oh, thank you, Chair, for you. First of all, I want to thank the Latino Senior Program for having us over a few days ago for, like, a little brunch, with all the questions that they sent our way and all the concerns that they do have. But it was, it was a great event. Thank you, Councilor Claire, for inviting me there as well. I do want to say thank you to the House of Destiny and that party, that was, that was great, even though I couldn't stay around very long, it was good to see the fact that bringing the community together and supporting the young children that are heading off to school next week. Want to kind of update on the slip and slide. That was a great event, even though the Town Manager did not slip or slide in the event, but it was, it was a great cause, and it was good to see that the Police Department and the Fire Department teamed up, Southbridge Credit Union, a couple families, Mr. Dow and his family, generous donors to the cause, thank you very much. And again, we always need volunteers. There's been quite a few coming my way, and I appreciate those that are out there actively seeking to participate in the community. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I just also wanted to thank the Latino Senior Program. Severina Rios, you know, volunteers her time to provide this integral service to these, to these seniors who, you know, get together a couple times a week, and it's, they have a really good time. Also, just wanted to remind everybody, the primaries are coming up on September 4th. We have some pretty interesting close races as far as, you know, between Democrats and Republicans that are coming up. You know, with the governor's race, with, you know, we don't have a primary for our state rep or for our state senator, but, you know, either party, there are several important ones that are going on. So I implore you all to go out September 4th if you can't make it. Absentee ballots are available now in Town Hall. You know, this, these types of races affect all of us, no matter how you believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Daniels?
I'm all set tonight, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one quick thing. I just wanted to say thanks to Steve and the people who all put on the Conscious and the Common this year. It's been so far, the ones that I've seen were excellent. So the Beatles' tribute band last night, and they were great. And Savers Bake helped lots on that one, too. There's, I think there's one more show this weekend, and then you've got the October, the Auburn, the Southbridge Autumn Fest coming up in a couple of weeks, so you want to put those on your schedule. And other than that, that's, that's all I have for tonight. Next meeting dates are Thursday. Tonight, we had a special council meeting on Thursday at seven, and then the next regular meeting will be Sunday, Monday, September 10th at seven, here in the Timbers.
Thank you. And I apologize to the councilors for just scheduling that today. There was a reason behind it due to some time-sensitive materials that we need to vote that were previously going to be on this evening, and rather than just call a meeting for one item, I figured we could at least continue our discussion on goals and objectives. I do realize that Councilor Nash won't be there, and I do anticipate Councilor Manna may not be there as well because of her circumstances this week. But I do appreciate any comments that you have, Councilor Nash, and I'll reach out to Councilor Manna to bring them forward. It really is a continuing discussion. I would like to wrap up goals and objectives by the meeting in September, mid-September. We do have an awful lot of work ahead of us with the zoning bylaw. That alone, if you look at tonight, it took how long to read? Six pages. That's a rather lengthy document. I will discuss with my colleagues at a later date, perhaps, seeking an opinion as to how we, what the definition of read that bylaw is, and how we can best accomplish that while keeping the community notified as appropriately through the Charter, but there has to be a better way to do that than, that's an awful lot of, that's three consecutive council meetings where we have other important business that we are conducting. But we will do it right, but just bear with me on that. So thank you for your indulgence and patience with me. Item nineteen, vote to enter an executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection three. A. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And B. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-nine B, Section twenty-three B, subsection three, to discuss strategy and conduct bargaining with the non-union personnel if the discussion in an open session will have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body, and if the Chair so declares to adjourn. There is a possibility that we may reconvene in open session due to one of the items that we have, so I'll just bear with you. Okay, so I am not, we will not adjourn out of executive session. There'll be a possibility that, well, we will go to open session, either to take a vote on an item that's in executive session or for the purposes of adjournment. But we will reconvene in open session. Thank you.
So moved.
Oh, second, sorry, thank you. Roll call, I'm sorry, thank you. I do appreciate the help on that. Go ahead. Roll call.
Councilor Claire?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Joe Van?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a quick, five-minute break just to stretch, and then we'll go stop the executive session. Thank you.